Situation, I need to call the meeting to order and then we need to open all of the public hearings. And then take a motion to continue them until 1:00 PM.
Today.
Um, today. So, um, I will call, uh, so I will officially call the meeting to order at 1:00 PM. And I would request a motion to open all five of the public hearings listed on the agenda. Uh, I will open them and now a motion to continue them to 1:00 PM today.
So move, Madam Chair.
Second.
Okay, by roll call, Matt?
Aye.
Tom?
Aye.
Don?
Aye.
And I vote aye. So, um, now, um, I should maybe give Malcolm a minute to get on. Have we heard back from him?
I just texted him.
Okay. Hi, Brian.
Good afternoon.
Uh, okay, well, I'm gonna, I'm gonna go ahead and have Amy, um, the first item on our agenda is the process to allocate. And I believe that's eight surplus rental car vehicle medallions. And we had, uh, two options laid out in our packet. And Amy, do you want to do a quick summary of your thinking on it and then the board can discuss?
Yes, thank you very much. Um, so as you know, we're, we've been working through possible amendments with the rental car, um, by law. Um, have a proposal in for this year and stuff. So some of this, you know, may be edited, determined, uh, on any passage of any amendments. However, regardless of any amendments that we do, um, we have needed to establish, um, this process for, um, excess medallion. So this is a process we really need to determine regardless. Um, so what I have done is, am I getting feedback, Erica, or is that?
Yeah, can, can everybody mute just in case there's?
I didn't know if that was me, so I just wanted to make sure.
I don't know if everybody else mutes, we'll see.
Okay. Um, so what we've done is, um, present two options modeled after certain processes we have in other areas. Um, the first one, um, we, uh, modeled a, what a rental car medallion lottery would look like. Currently, we use a lottery process for something like the town peer slip lottery that we do every year for certain ones and every two years for other types of slips. And then secondly, um, I've laid out what a waiting list type of process would be. And again, that's modeled after what we currently use for the taxi limo charter tour waiting list and also, um, they use it for the, um, um, out in the harbor and I'm not thinking of the word right now for the boats. Um, thank you. So those are other areas that we use those. Um, uh, before I just go through each, I'll say that the recommendation is definitely going to be a waiting list type of thing. What we're looking at here, what I believe we're looking at here is, uh, something related to a business. Um, currently the proposal with peer-to-peer car sharing and all of that is separating that as it's a separate its own definition. So as I've looked at this as someone in this waiting list, possibly establishing a new business, um, of some kind. So there's a couple of ways to look at that. A lottery, which, uh, like we do every year and every two years for the town peer slip lottery seems to be something where you win something where there's other options. You can have a boat on a trailer, you can, you know, have it on a mooring, have it in another dock. So lottery is used for that every year where folks apply for that lottery, uh, on a yearly basis, um, depending on the type of slip they're looking for. You know, a straight fee of $25. Um, there's a specific time period in which to do that. I believe in, in October, November time period. Um, and then they run a lottery like you would see. Um, they use the ping pong balls, pick the numbers, uh, determined on your lottery number. And those are the folks that get that. Um, I have also outlined the waiting list, which again, I think is, is more appropriate for a business type of setting in that we would establish something of this form, and please stop me at any time for a question here. But this would be set up based on what we currently have an info request form that we set up in 2021, uh, for folks interested in information in any time any of these came forward. Mixed in there are some folks, you know, running personal cars in Turo or, uh, current rental agencies. But it's a good place to start. We have 28 of those entries since 2021. Um, establishing a timeline to apply for something like this as we do for taxi tour charter and limo list, which are all at maximum levels. And that process is once a year, uh, in a certain month, which I would probably do, uh, keep it in the renewal time period, say November. Uh, folks would have to renew their place on the list, which is a $10 fee on an annual basis. Otherwise they drop off and have to reapply. Um, similar to, did we, oh, thank you.
Amy, I'm gonna, I'm gonna let Matt, he's got his hand up, see if he is at this moment.
Great, thank you.
Yeah, hi. Yeah. So you said peer-to-peer was separate? How are you thinking, like, what did you mean by that? Are you talking, there'll be businesses and peer-to-peer is different? Or you're talking a peer-to-peer is gonna be the same as a business? I want to just be clear.
Correct. So what I'm saying is depending on the, um, outcome of any amendment. I know one of the amendments, um, defines peer-to-peer car sharing and does not include it in the brick and mortar type of business definition. So there's some, several things in here, and this is part of the thing we have to decide too, is, um, the allocation and who's included in this. If current businesses are not, if this is, you know, determined by the select board to, uh, establish new agencies, uh, for a business. So, and I can, you know, go to Brian Riley if he has any other, uh, any other things to say there. But I think that's still up in the air depending on how this comes out, uh, for a bylaw amendment. Um, because otherwise you're looking at 200 folks looking for a medallion here and there for the one personal vehicle they're renting out. Um, so I kind of formed it as those establishing a business similar to a taxi tour and charter and all of those. You have to submit the actual application. Um, and then such time that they come up on the list, they have 30 days. You can apply 60 days to purchase a vehicle or set up what they need to do for that business. So that's kind of the model I set up here as well. I didn't want to get into the, into the weeds with the peer-to-peer car sharing, if that makes sense.
Yeah, okay.
Okay?
So.
I, I'm still, so are you recommending peer-to-peer be sep- sorry, can I, sorry?
Yeah.
Are you recommending peer-to-peer be separate or, and not included in this? Are you recommending, you, you know, what is the recommendation? I thought I knew it, but now I'm confused.
My rec- I based it on an actual business setup, not peer-to-peer, personal car rentals.
So.
I don't, someone help me help.
Yeah, no, I'm, I'm gonna, I'm gonna try to help here. So, so we have two simultaneous things that we have to figure out. We have medallions that are out there and available.
Correct.
Now, my understanding is the bylaw says, could be interpreted to say that peer-to-peer car sharing is not permitted under the bylaw. So that giving out or, or allocating medallions to folks engaged in Turo would be a way to legitimize what they're doing under the current bylaw, but we only have eight medallions to give out. So it's not even gonna touch the market. We have a, a question for town meeting about how do they want, how does town meeting, well, how does the board want to propose to town meeting to amend or not amend the bylaw to reflect some change in how the bylaw addresses peer-to-peer car rentals, which is the policy decision that we're gonna have Wednesday night. Um, now that I think about it, Matt, the way you asked the question, these two things are so intertwined that it's almost impossible to answer this one until we answer the other one and see what happens at town meeting. So I'm almost thinking that doing any kind of allocation system for those eight medallions doesn't make any sense until we figure out where we're going with the, with the car rental bylaw. Brian, does that sound right to you?
Uh, yeah, I think that's right. Um, is, uh, as I recall, the very first time this was brought to our attention by a council for Turo, there's something, there was at least like 150 people on Nantucket who were doing it, right? So you would need to come up with a, a lot more medallions if we're gonna fold them under this bylaw, uh, which is capped at the moment. Um, yeah, I, I, I think you're right. And, and as Amy said, I, you can either sort of carve out peer-to-peer and figure out what you want to do that separately versus putting them into this medallion system. Um, or, or not, although that may, if there's really, um, if there's really only eight available now, you know, I mean, you might have to raise the cap to 900 or something if we're gonna change the definition and include those folks. And, and I will keep, I, I really haven't had much time right so far, but I'll keep trying to find out if there's either, either any legal decisions, court decisions that either have said, yes, you can regulate peer-to-peer locally, or no, you can't. Uh, hopefully I can find one or the other to at least be a, you know, give us something to look at.
That.
Right, and I, you know, to, to that point, I think we, we already are regulating it. You know, i- it's, it's clear to me, and it's been clear to me for three years, that, you know, any rental of cars, keeping or letting a car for, you know, for rent has not been legal, period. You know, under our existing, you know, bylaw that was approved, that's number one, but number one. And so I, I think that's, you know, I, so I think that that's clear, that's been clear to me. I think we should not, uh, open, I think we should be getting them under the cap. I think they should be included under the cap because if we exclude them and make a loophole, then that loophole will be, uh, you know, the, how, how, if we can't deal with 100 or 300, how are we gonna oversee thousands of them? You know, and so I think we have to have, have to have oversight within the cap system. And, and so I think that's, you know, that, that, those are, that's crucial to me. You know, I, I don't, I'd hold, I would, you know, I would, and maybe we bump it by 100 or something, but I don't think we, you know, we don't want, we'd put this in place so that we would not have thousands of rental cars on Nantucket. And I think we have to make sure that we continue, that we continue that. So anyway.
So, so we have two conversations. We have a policy conversation about Turo and peer-to-peer car sharing within the, within the bylaw. And then we have a conversation of if we go with allocating medallions to or, or having surplus medallions, whether it's simply the eight we have now, or we amend the bylaw or clarify the bylaw so we can pull back unused medallions from, from businesses that have them. The question really today is what is the best way to reallocate those medallions? So let's like, let's, let's say we're gonna get more of them in some way. We have eight and we're gonna somehow get more of them. How do we want to hand them out? Whether that's to businesses or, or individuals renting peer-to-peer? Do we want to go waiting list or lottery? I think it's a theory of allocation. Why don't we have that debate today? Um, and whether the lottery, whether the waiting list and/or the lottery includes rental car businesses and/or peer-to-peer car sharing is, is the conversation on the policy side, but it's what do we prefer? And Amy, when you talked about the town peer lottery, I wouldn't be having these handed over year by year. Once you get one, you keep it until you relinquish it. So that sort of doesn't fall into that town peer lottery analogy that you had. We wouldn't be issuing it for a year. You would have it and there would be criteria for maintaining it. And when you don't, you relinquish it. So we could go the lottery version or we could go the waitlist. Any thoughts from the board on that? Tom?
Madam Chair, uh, through you to Amy. Amy, would you, I know you kind of said it already, but would you go kind of on, on your recommendation of the waiting list as opposed to a lottery, just the kind of general parameters of why you, why you would recommend that over a lottery?
Yes, thank you. So, um, just watching it and how we work with it now in other quota areas, so to speak, in taxis and things of that sort. Um, it maintains a serious list of those, you know, wanting to establish a business or establish, be part of it. Uh, it's a nominal fee each year to maintain so that we're, we're keeping a pretty serious list. You know, they apply as they would, um, and then it just gives a, you know, ordered amount. If they, if they come up on the, on that sort of situation and they want to push it a year or push it and aren't ready, it can go to the next person and then they have a certain amount of time to get established. Um, and part of that, I wanted to discuss what would be a minimum amount to help establish a business. You know, what's financially viable for someone to go off of a peer-to-peer car sharing and establish a business. So that is my thinking, that that's a more serious approach to those really wanting to get into this. Um, rather than a, a lottery, which lottery can be done. Obviously, it's not a, a year-to-year thing. Um, but I just think this is a better way to maintain if we're looking at a business establishment. Um, and again, we do those for the moorings and things of that sort, so that it's a, you know, a serious list of those that, that want to be involved. And it's easier for us to maintain, uh, and communicate with those folks as well. So I, I just feel like in a business sense, it's the better, a better setup.
Amy, I would also imagine for a lottery, you probably need a certified lottery agent and it, you, you need to hold it and
Correct.
unless it's, yeah, okay.
Yeah. So I, you know, I, like I said, I associate a lottery with winning something. So I want to do something that's more an established kind of process that we work with, um, through the years.
Malcolm?
Yeah, I can see the value of a waiting list, but how do you determine that first waiting list? Is there a lottery in the waiting list or do we just open a website some morning and hope it's, keeps going?
Yep. So, um, one of the notes I put in there is that in 2021, when this started to get a little messy, we set up a info request form online, uh, on our rental car page, said that we were at our maximum, but please, you know, submit a form if you're interested in being part of any a- allocation or information. Wasn't an application, but it was enough for me to keep track of outside of my email, who was interested. So I have an established list right now of about 28, uh, folks and I would, once we put this out, say we put it out at a certain month, any of those folks that do apply would keep their current rank. Okay, so 1 through 28, any of those folks, wherever they are in that order, and they apply during the, uh, time period that we set would remain, and then others would come as it's received.
So what if we have 100 come at the same time? I mean,
Yeah.
I can see some chaos there.
It, it is.
Sort of lo- lottery the first.
You, correct. Yep, I see what you're saying. Absolutely. I would, um, if we start with that initial list, they've been, you know, involved in this conversation for a couple of years. So those folks, I think, would, you know, stay at a certain level. And then absolutely, that's something to consider as well. Anyone who comes in the month of whatever we set up, say month of March, that submits it, it can be a lottery as to their initial standing. I see what you're saying, yes.
We already have precedent for this with moorings.
Yes.
You know, emails come in time stamped down to the second. So if it's a, if, if it's a form submission, it literally is time stamped.
Yeah.
The person who gets in at 11:01 versus the person who gets it in at 11:02, there's a, there's a, there's an order to that. And I think the important thing is that you have a transparent list, that you're assigned a number and that it's clear that this is, you know, you move up, your number moves up as people either drop off or get a medallion.
Yep.
And, um, how we handle multiple medallion, you know, for starting a business, that's a whole other conversation. But Matt?
Yeah, that, and that was, yeah, I was gonna say the same thing that you just said, Brooke. I think the nominal fee, I think the fee should be a little higher because we don't want people just putting in for 10. We should have a limit on how many people can go in for. We should be putting, uh, you know, one at a time or one or two, and your name's only on the list once. You know, what we're trying to correct is people quote unquote, sharing their car. And so if that, you know, because that's gonna, is, if you listen to Steve, uh, Cohen the other night, this is gonna be good for Nantucket. We're gonna have less traffic and this is gonna be great. And this is gonna sa- solve all our problems. So if we really are gonna do that and it's gonna solve our problems and we want people sharing their existing car, not buying five or six or two, two more, two, one extra or two extra. We want them sharing their existing car. So I think it should be one, one at a time or something. We should be, if that's the model that we're solving and we're giving them, you know, giving them a, uh, a medallion, giving them a, a, a path to a medallion, then let's do that. I don't think that, I'm not sure that anybody has the land and the wherewithal to open a actual business with, you know, with 10 or 20 or 50 cars. Where are they gonna park them? How are they gonna clean them? Where is they gonna, you know, all those issues? So I think that if, you know, so anyway, though, I, I think that the, the fee should be a little more than nominal. And I think the waitlist should be, uh, we should do a waitlist, find, and the other thing, if you're trying to allocate a scarce resource, why, you know, if we have 28 people, maybe, you know, maybe we let them bid. We say, you know, cause then, then, then the rest of the, for the first 28 medallions and the high bidders get it. And then they're on a list based on when they put their bid in, and then everybody else is on the list when they come in. There's other ways to do it than ju- than straight, uh, you know, then, you know, then sort of, anyway, there's, there are other ways.
Okay, so, uh, is my sense of the room that the waiting list is the path to flesh out rather than, um, spending much more time? Don?
Ye- yes, I'm on board with the waiting list.
Okay, all right. So Amy, now you have some direction and then we'll morph this conversation Wednesday night, Matt, into more of the, of the, the policy, um, pieces of this that, uh, that will be played out at town meeting in the, in whatever warrant article we put on. Matt?
Yeah, my, I think the details on this are important and we should be, we should have something that's workable that, you know, that's not gonna overwhelm staff that we all agree with, that has, that is fair. You know, fair to the existing people who own medallions and fair to everybody else. And I don't think that we, this shouldn't become a, uh, we, we've got to set it up in a way so this isn't become something that's modified and on town meeting floor into a mess. You know, the, the, some of this should stay with, should stay with us for, in the, for now and into the future. And what goes to town meeting shouldn't be a chance to modify any of those key details because people will. So anyway.
Yeah. So, so, uh, for Brian, like, what goes in the warrant is really, there's a lot of discretion at the select board in terms of these individual procedures around this. It's really about cleaning up the rental car bylaw and, and deciding whether peer-to-peer is considered a rental car and therefore should have a medallion. And then how, and to, for my opinion, how do we get back the unused medallions and, and, and create a system to reallocate them so that we stay close to or at the number we have? And that includes both rental car agencies and peer-to-peer. But that's just my opinion. We'll talk about that more Wednesday.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah. Um, okay, great. So, uh, everybody feel comfortable moving on? All right, just.
Madam Chair.
I have a hard stop at two, so Matt, you may have to take over if we don't get through these, um, public hearings. So, uh, we have continued all of these public hearings, so I'm going to, Amy, is it, I mean, um, Erica, am I reopening or just? Oh, yeah, we're continuing public hearing number one to consider the utility petition, um, from Nantucket Electric Company National Grid Plan 30854670. And this one is Federal Street adjacent to 16 Broad Street, north and then east to existing Manhole 2 on Broad Street and south to existing Manhole 32 on South Water Street.
So can I just give you all just a quick overview of this? These five utility petitions are all related to National Grid's L1 project. Um, we have one, two, three people here from National Grid, John Castro, who's one of the engineers, Tim Lyford, um, Jeff O'Donnell, who, um, I don't think works directly for National Grid, but is here representing with them. Um, this is a very much pared-down version of the original L1 plans. Um, Drew Patno, the DPW director, and I, Matt with members of the National Grid team back in October. Um, about these plans, we agreed that this had minimal impacts um, on the downtown roads. Um, obviously with the recent power outage over Stroll Weekend. Um, National Grid is anxious to get this work done. This, the plan is to hopefully have this started in March and be done before summer. Um, and then I'm just gonna share my screen so you can see some plans. Um, this one in particular, I call it Broad Street, um, they're gonna be putting in um, a new switchgear module. It's gonna be closer to the building. It's gonna be coming out here and then going over here. Um, and one thing, John, that I wanted to point out, um, I did have a discussion with the town manager. Um, and I don't know if this is possible, but if it's possible to go through the sidewalk instead of the asphalt in this location, just because it's easier to repair a sidewalk than it is, uh, the, the paved roadway, um, that would be the preferred method. But again, I don't know if that's possible, but just wanted to point that out.
We can take a look at that, Erica. Um, tough to say now, uh, but yeah, we can certainly take a look and see if we could, uh, turn into the sidewalk as quickly as possible and, uh, do that work in the sidewalk. We can certainly take a look at that.
Questions from the board?
It's, it's Matt. I think some, some of the sidewalks that, uh, Rob McNeil did, I think they put a hard base under a concrete or something so cars could drive over them. Are these those or no?
There's no concrete under them, only under the, um, only under the curving.
Oh, oh, then we're good. Okay.
Yeah, okay. So, uh, this is a public hearing. Does anyone from the public care to speak? Okay, seeing none, do I have a motion to close this public hearing?
Motion to close.
Second.
By roll call, Tom?
Hi.
Don?
Aye.
Matt?
Hi.
Malcolm?
Aye.
And the chair votes aye up.
Oh. Yes, it's RP Thompson.
How should I do this?
Um, can I just let that person in real quick? Cause I think that their question is related to a s- a separate one.
Okay, let's, let's see what they have to say and then we'll figure out process-wise what we need to do.
Hi, um, everyone here. My name is RP Thompson. Um, I represent the owner of 20 Straight Wharf. I wasn't sure.
We're gonna get to that one next.
Okay, I wasn't sure.
That's a separate one.
Yep, sorry about that.
That's okay. Thank you.
Good. So we don't have to go back. Okay, so the public hearing is closed on Broad Street, uh, the pleasure of the board.
You're, you're muted, Matt.
Move, move approval?
Do you want to add anything about trying to put it under the sidewalk?
Yeah, try, yeah, following the recommendations and, you know, and what Eric is requesting.
And, um, just, I would preface too that all the, um, motions should be in line with the departmental comments.
Yes, that's what I meant.
Second.
All right, so by roll call, Matt?
Aye.
Tom?
Aye.
Don?
Aye.
Malcolm?
Aye.
And the chair votes aye. Okay. So next up is the public hearing regarding Plan 30854670, 41 feet of conduit, um, on Easy Street from Manhole 6 to stub conduits that are, uh, that are from existing Manhole 10. I'm not sure that that English works, but, um.
So, um, this is just this very small section on Easy Street, right across from Cambridge Street um, and near the entrance to Old North Wharf.
Okay, um, questions from the board? And this is not the one Mr. Thompson's interested in, Erica. Okay. Uh, so, uh, a motion to close, uh, this is a public hearing. Is anyone from the public wish to speak on this item regarding Easy Street? Okay, seeing none, a motion to close the public hearing?
So move, Madam Chair.
Second.
Second.
Okay, by roll call, Malcolm?
Hi.
Don?
Aye.
Matt?
Hi.
Tom?
Hi.
And the chair votes aye. The public is, public hearing is closed. The pleasure of the board.
Move approval, Madam Chair.
Second.
Okay, second from Matt. By roll call, Matt, Malcolm?
Hi.
Matt?
Hi.
Don?
Aye.
Tom?
Hi.
And the chair votes aye. So we'll move on to the public hearing to consider utility petition for plans.
It's all the same plan.
They're all the same plans. Sorry. This is 210 feet of conduit in an easterly direction from transformer pad number one dash three, from three Old North Wharf to 20 Straight Wharf.
So I'm gonna let John or Tim review this, if you guys don't mind. The majority of the work does take place on Still Dock.
Okay.
Yeah, so.
Okay.
I'm sorry.
Go ahead.
Yeah, so there we, we, we have an existing cable that leaves that transformer and goes easterly and feeds transformer over by 20. It's a direct buried cable. We're just looking to install some conduit and put that cable in, in the concrete in case duck bank and not have it direct buried in, in the earth. That's, that's what we're trying to accomplish there.
Okay. I will say that we did receive an email on Friday, which I thought I'd put in your packet, but I forgot. But I did email it to you all. It was from one of the abudders that lives on Still Dock. They were in favor of this as long as the roadway is restored to its light kind or better condition. And I believe this is the one that Mr. Thompson is anxious to speak on.
Mr. Thompson?
Yes, hi. So we, one of our tenants is backyard barbecue. And I know that they get a lot of deliveries back there. And so I was wondering if Still Dock will still be accessible during this or if it will be completely inaccessible during this work.
Okay, Mr. Castro?
Well, I guess we'd have to take a look at that. I don't, I don't re.
John, my guess, with the narrowness of that, of that road, it's almost like an alleyway and it has one lane of parking on the northern side here. Then if you're working right here in the roadway, my guess is maybe they could come to here, but that wouldn't even make sense. So the truck might have to come up New Whale and then Street Wharf for deliveries.
Okay.
Do we know what the duration of this part of the project might be in terms of timeline?
I don't, I can certainly get, speak with the contractor and ask him how long they think it would take to install and restore.
Erica, can you facilitate a dialogue between the contractor and Mr. Thompson so that backyard barbecue knows what to expect?
Sure. And Mr. Thompson, I believe you've been in touch with Katie Cabral in our office and she's got your contact info?
Yes, if that's, if that's who sent, sent me the, the info today, that is correct.
Yeah.
Okay.
So I did have one more question. So obviously, you know, the transformer is adjacent to 20 Straight Wharf. Do you know if it, if it's at all on the actual Straight Wharf property or, or will there need to be access granted through the, the property? I'm just trying to understand, you know, how this will affect our, our property essentially.
I, I don't know exactly where on the property it's located. If, if it is, you know, several feet into wherever, if it's on the property, then we would need to access it.
It looks like according to the map, there's an existing transformer. So you would be connecting into that?
Correct.
And, and it looks like the way that the map is drawn, all the work is within Still Dock itself. And then you would connect into the existing transformer?
Correct. That appears, yes. If, if it's a couple of feet into the property, then we, we would have to obviously go into the property a couple of feet. But certainly we would restore it to existing conditions or better.
Okay, so how can I, how can I find out a little bit more about, you know, where this transformer is and, and, you know, how much this is, this is going to impact the property?
If you'd like, we can, I can give you a shout after this and, and if you want to meet onsite, like you can have someone or myself or someone from National Grid meet you there to discuss it.
Okay, that would be great.
You know, if an existing transformer was above ground, underground?
I believe it's a, it's a pad, not a transformer.
Okay.
So that would be, that would be above ground then, correct?
Yes.
Okay. But the lines will run underground to that, correct?
Correct.
Okay. Yeah, I would, I would love to, you know, connect with you after this and, and meet onsite and, and understand this a little further.
I will connect, review for that.
Okay, thank you all. Appreciate it.
Sure thing. Thanks for coming, Mr. Thompson.
No problem.
Okay, so any other public inquiries or questions on this topic? Questions from the board? If not, I'd take a motion to close the public hearing.
Mrs. Moore, am I, am I still here? So just out of, so you know, I'm, I'm here on behalf of the owner, looking to bring back more information. If, if there was an issue with, you know, the plan here, is, is this our only opportunity to, to discuss that? Because, you know, obviously I need to get a little bit more information from National Grid. But I just wanted to make sure that if, if there is an issue that, you know, we would still have the opportunity to discuss that with the town.
Once we close the public hearing and the board takes action, then that is pretty much over. So if, and John, I don't know how this is going to impact your timeline, but we could continue this one to the February 10th meeting to give you time to speak with them.
So, yeah, that, that would work.
John? John? This, this is Jeff O'Donnell with C J Consulting. Is it possible to get the, the screen so I could share some photos of the transformer?
If, Miss, if Chair Moore is okay, go, go ahead.
That's fine. Go ahead. If we can solve this today, even better.
That's, that's the hope. So bear with me, please. So John, this here is the transformer in question on Still Dock.
That's the three face pad, correct?
All right, this photo was, was, was taken back in May of '22, just for people's reference.
Looks like it backs up though to North.
Yeah, that sounds like.
That, yeah, Jeff, we need the single face pad toward, at the end of Still Dock.
Oh, at the end of Still Dock. Okay.
Yeah.
Sorry.
So, so would it be, so in, in the, in the big picture?
Oh, I apologize. I do not have a photo of that. I apologize.
This can, this can wait in the big picture.
Okay.
I don't know if there's language that can be put in it that, that it approved upon agreement with property owner at 20 and we can just get back or if you want to table it.
I'd rather continue it.
Okay.
Brian, I think that's the better thing to do, right? Because that's a little fuzzy to do it.
Yes, I would agree with that. And of course, if you hear from National Grid and the other parties that we're all fine now, you know, you, you only need to, you know, deal with this hearing for a minute on your next meeting.
Yep. Okay.
Yeah.
Out of all that we're petitioning, this is the one that can, we can delay if we, if we need to.
Madam Chair?
Great, Tom?
I would make a motion to continue this utility petition to February 10th at our licensing and petitions meeting.
Okay, do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, by roll call, Tom?
Hi.
Malcolm?
Hi.
Matt?
Hi.
Don?
Aye.
And the chair votes aye. Okay, so we'll see you all again in February on that one.
Thank you, everyone.
Okay. And then next up is the section from.
This is on North Union Street, behind St. Mary's.
Yep.
And it goes out to India Street. So let me just share my screen. John, go ahead and review.
Again, yeah, we're just trying to make a connection between our existing manhole, I believe it's manhole 42 or thirty, actually 38 on India Street with four conduits to manhole 37 on Cambridge and North Union. And then we're going to, we've approached the church, we're pursuing an easement on their property. And then we're going to extend the duck bank onto their property to, you know, where we'll install an above ground switching module.
And Chair Moore, I'd like to know this property here. Let's see, address, one Cambridge Street, which is under construction currently. We've had a conversation with the contractor here about this work that's going to be coming in and being done. I believe it's actually going to be the same contracting company that'll, that's been doing the underground work here that is going to be doing the work here potentially. So everybody is on the same page for this project.
Perfect. Okay, this is a public hearing. Does anyone from the public wish to speak on this section of the work? Okay, any questions from the board or a motion to close the public hearing?
I'll move to close the public hearing.
Okay, a second?
Second.
Okay, by roll call, Matt?
Hi.
Don?
Aye.
Malcolm?
Hi.
Tom?
Hi.
Okay, the public hearing is closed. The pleasure of the board.
Move to approve based on the comments from staff. And the same thing that Erica said, get, you know, do it on the sidewalks if possible.
Okay.
This one's definitely going to have to be in the roadway.
Yep, so can't do it.
A second?
Second.
Two voices. By roll call, Matt?
Hi.
Don?
Aye.
Tom?
Hi.
Malcolm?
Hi.
And the chair votes aye. Okay, and last up is India Street. Coleman Court, AKA Independence Lane to existing transformer pad at 19 Center Street.
So again, I'm going to have John review this, but they're going to be out here on India Street, coming down Coleman Court, other, as we know it as Independence Lane. The work that is from here over, this is all on private property. So that would be as part of, you know, an easement with the private property owner. So we're just looking really at this section here.
Okay. This is a public hearing. Anyone from the public wish to speak? Any comments or questions from the board? Motion to close the public hearing?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, by roll call, Matt?
Hi.
Don?
Aye.
Tom?
Hi.
Malcolm?
Hi.
And the chair votes aye. Okay, I think that's it.
Motion to, um, action.
Motion to approve?
Prove.
Oh, right. Yeah.
That was a motion to approve.
Okay, second?
Second.
Okay, by roll call, Matt?
Hi.
Malcolm?
Hi.
Don?
Aye.
Tom?
Hi.
And I vote aye. Thank you always for the reminder for that second piece of the puzzle that I definitely forgot.
So I'm going to connect John Castro with Mr. Thompson, so they can get to the bottom of the Still Dock item. And then I think everything else is good.
Okay, motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second.
By roll call, Matt?
Hi.
Don?
Aye.
Tom?
Hi.
Malcolm?
Hi.
And the chair votes aye. Thanks, everybody.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.